At this time, I'd like to read this. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, Governor Wallace, under Minnesota Statute Chapter 12, Emergency Management declared a peacetime emergency on March 13, 2020. The city has determined that as in person meetings may not be practical or prudent because of health pandemic. The City of Detroit Lakes meetings will be held via telephone, conference call, or other electronic means as outlined by Minnesota Statute Number 13.021. Members of the public who wish to view this meeting virtually should submit a request to the City of Detroit Lakes. At this time, I'm going to have all of you to please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item is the approval of the minutes. Has everybody had a chance to read those minutes? Unless there's any additions or corrections, is there a motion to approve them as presented?
Make motion to approve.
Second.
And there's a second? Okay, then we do the call here. Dan Winner?
Aye.
Wendy Spry?
Aye.
Matt Bokey?
Aye.
Dan Josephson?
Aye.
Aaron Dolman?
Aye.
Natalie Bligh?
Aye.
Madeline Sukie?
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries. The next item is we go to our consent agenda. All items with an asterisk are considered to be a routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which the event with the item will be moved through the General Order of Business and considered separately in a normal sequence on the agenda. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
Motion to second. Dan Winner?
Aye.
Wendy Spry?
Aye.
Matt Bokey?
Aye.
Dan Josephson?
Aye.
Aaron Dolman?
Aye.
Natalie Bligh?
Aye.
Madeline Sukie?
Aye.
That motion carries. Now, we're going to go into public hearings, but before we do that, I want to go to an item here. The first one actually is, A, we're going to do that, then we've got some people in the audience, we're going to do it before we do some of these other public hearings. But is Melissa Birch, should we have her on board there? She's here tonight from the Clean Energy Resource Team, would like to present the City Council with some information and also an award that we have.
Yes, thanks so much for having me speak tonight. I am Melissa Birch. I'm with the Clean Energy Resource Teams, and we work a lot with the Minnesota Green Step Program. And I am here today to present to you your award for achieving Step Two in the Green Step Program. So unfortunately, I'm not in person, so I can't hold up the blocks to show you, but they did arrive in your city office a little while back. Ah ha, I think I see them there. Wonderful. So congratulations. Thank you so much for your commitment to improving the quality of life and the resilience of your community. I know you guys have accomplished a lot over the last year and a half despite the fact that we had a pandemic and continue to, you know, from making your city buildings more efficient to ensuring that your community members are safe on their bicycles and making it a bicycle-friendly city. So we are delighted to recognize you for achieving Step Two, and you're actually within striking distance of Step Three, which is really exciting. So we at CERTS and in the Minnesota Green Step Program are here to support you in your future endeavors. So if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to take them, but basically, congratulations.
Do we have any questions for Melissa? I would say thank you very much, this award, and we look forward to working with you and getting even more awards. We want to keep Detroit Lakes being the best place to live, work, and do business. Thank you for being here tonight.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to switch the general bit. I want to go to Item 7D under the Finance. We have Becky here from the Becker County Museum, and let's go to that. I'm going to call on Natalie.
Okay, so in front of us, we have 7D. We received a memo from the City Administrator regarding the Becker County Museum. So we do have four approvals in front of us tonight, but I'm going to ask our City Administrator, Kelsey, to provide an update overall.
Yes, Vice Mayor and Council. Might be helpful just to work off of the memo I had in the packet. There are a few different agenda items. First is the land lease. Part of the museum that connects between the home's theater entryway over to the main museum building will be built on city property. That necessitates the need for a ground lease, which is in your packet, so that's one item. The second item is a land donation agreement to basically accommodate for the construction of the parking lots. The remaining property that the museum will have left over after they build the main facility will be donated to the city for use of the parking lot area. There's actually three tracts of land. Tract A is actually a small parcel of property that actually is where the existing chiller system sits. Part of it actually sits on museum property, so that's Tract A. And then Tract B and C would be for accommodating the parking lot. The third item is in our memorandum of agreement that we signed at the end of last year, one of the provisions of that agreement was that the City Council would approve the site plan. So in your packet is an updated site plan. It's, you know, that's evolved over time, but I think we're pretty much, you know, 98% of the way there on that final site plan. It nets out an additional 47 parking spaces on the site. The only caveat to that is that parking plan includes the acquisition of a 33-foot lot from the Chamber of Commerce. That's one item we don't have available for tonight for consideration, so approval of the site plan would be contingent upon acquiring that property from the Chamber. The fourth item is related to the overall budget. You may recall that it's been a while now, the City Council had approved a pledge of $450,000 towards the parking lot improvements for the History Museum project. And again, that the project's evolved a little bit, and as we get closer to nailing down the final site plan, we were able to get a little bit clearer number of what the budget looks like. So if you look at my memo, if you can kind of follow that along, you know, the current engineer estimate is at $660,000, which does not include the cost of any land acquisition from the Chamber of Commerce. Roughly $100,000 of that would be improvements directly related to the building project, which would be basically the museum's responsibility to pay. So that leaves us $560,000. For roughly $45,000 of that is attributed to the parking lot lighting, and the Public Utility Commission made a motion and approved a motion this morning to basically provide that as an in-kind contribution to the project. So that basically leaves us roughly a $515,000 budget for the parking lot. So with the $450,000 existing pledge, that leaves a $65,000 shortfall. Basically, the staff recommendation would be for the City Council to consider an additional $100,000 pledge to the museum for a total of $550,000. Basically, the extra $100,000 pledge would be hopefully to cover the cost of the parking lot and that land acquisition from the Chamber. Again, a caveat there, these are estimates, they're not as big costs. Eventually, we'll have to, we'll bid the project and see where actual construction costs are at, but I think at this point, the request would be an extra $100,000 for the museum. So in summary, again, there's four action items. Be approved the lease agreement, approved the land donation agreement, approved the site plan contingent upon acquisition of the Chamber parcel, and then consideration to that funding request of an additional $100,000.
Okay, Kelsey, I have a question. When we go and vote on this, can, do we need to do all these, I suppose, separately? Or can we do the top three together? And the funding request, how would you prefer having that done?
You know, everyone's kind of cringing at me, but we probably should do them as separate motions.
Okay, then with that, I'll turn that back over to Natalie then.
Okay, so I will start with 7D, Item One. The Finance Committee reviewed the consideration to the Becker County Museum lease agreement, and so moves to approve.
Second. We have a motion to second. Is there any discussion? And also, I'd like to ask, since we have Becky here, Becky, would you like to say anything at all, or any comments after what Kelsey had said to add to what he had said?
I just want to say thank you for your extra consideration. This has been a long time coming with this project, as everybody very well knows, but your support is very, very much appreciated, and we're looking forward to breaking ground in a few months.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so let's go down for the first item for the lease agreement, then. Dan Winner?
Aye.
Wendy Spry?
Aye.
Matt Bokey?
Aye.
Dan Josephson?
Aye.
Aaron Dolman?
Aye.
Natalie Bligh?
Aye.
Madeline Sukie?
Aye.
Okay, next one.
And then Item Two was for the consideration to the Becker County Museum land donation agreement, and the Finance Committee reviewed, and I so move.
Second.
Motion to second, and I might mention that the land agreement is for a 45-year lease. It's very similar to what we did to the Boys and Girls Club. Okay, any other discussion? If not, Dan?
Aye.
Wendy?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Natalie Bligh?
Aye.
And Madeline, okay. Motion carries.
And Item Three on your agenda is the consideration to the Becker County Museum site plan. So Finance reviewed this and recommends approval of that contingent upon the acquisition of the Chamber property in addition to that, and I so move.
Second.
Motion to second, is there any discussion on that? Okay, if not, Dan Winner?
Aye.
Okay, Wendy Spry?
Aye.
Matt Bokey?
Aye.
Dan Josephson?
Aye.
Aaron Dolman?
Aye.
Natalie Bligh?
Aye.
Madeline Sukie?
Aye.
That motion carries, and the fourth item.
The last one, the consideration to the Becker Museum funding request. And as Kelsey had stated in his recap, we had contributed or pledged up to $450,000 before, so this request is to move that to a $550,000 pledge, and the Finance Committee reviewed and approved, and I so move.
Second.
Motion to second, any discussion?
See, Vice Mayor should just maybe clarify too. I didn't say this in my memo, it comes from the Food and Beverage Tax Fund, so you might want to just point that out.
Okay.
Up to the five.
Okay, Heidi, you have any other comment on that, or?
No, just to clarify that it's up to $550,000.
$550,000, great, very good. Okay.
I guess my one comment would be is, I think I'm about up my limit on this appetite for this item. We originally started $450,000. I thought that was kind of the edge where we wanted to be. Now we're $550,000. Now, if you include the utilities, we're at $650,000. Now, if you include the in-kind, we're close to $700,000 for a project that's larger than any other entity that we've ever donated to in the past. Seeing that, I think, like I say, I'm, this is about it for me, Becky, just being upfront and honest with you, so.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, we'll take a roll call here. Dan Winner?
Aye.
Wendy Spry?
Aye.
Matt Bokey?
Aye.
Okay, Dan Josephson?
Aye.
Aaron Dolman?
Aye.
Natalie Bligh?
Aye.
Madeline Sukie?
Aye.
Okay, that item passes. Okay, let's go on. The next item is going to be for Item 4E. We'll call on Matt Bokey, and we want to welcome, let's see, we're going to welcome our co-admiral people tonight.
If, yeah, if you could address, thank you.
We just wanted to come and say hi again. Of course, last year, we weren't able to have Water Carnival, only the second time in the last 86 years that that has happened. We are looking forward to having it this year. Right now, we're all go pending governors' gatherings and stuff. We are going to have a Water Carnival no matter what. We may have to change a few of our events, but we're thankful for the city's help and everything that they've helped us with so far and for the last 85 years, so. Any questions?
And Nat, if you could, just kind of give us a quick rundown of who the bands are, what's new this year, just anything like that that the general public would be interested in.
So we're actually sticking with the same artists we had last year. So Friday night, we are going to have Slam Alabama. Headliner is Terry Clark. And then Saturday, we are having Troubadour with headliner Clay Walker, so we're going back to country for this one. We've got a couple, we are working with the radio station, we're going to have some extreme tippy cup competition. Unfortunately, we are getting rid of the bed races. It's just harder every year to get people to be able to build beds and do that, so that's going to take the place of that. As for that, I mean, we're looking at maybe getting a sailboat or boat extravaganza on the boat, one of those, or on the lake, one of those Saturdays as well, so.
Excellent. I know this was discussed at the Liquor and Gambling, and we'd like to make a recommendation to approve this.
Okay, is the motion approved? Is there a second?
Second.
Is a second, any other further discussion?
One thing, just for Kelsey, and I know public works is very involved with this, just the communication is always key to make a great event like this, so please just keep us, all the departments up to snuff if you can on this.
Sounds good.
Speaking from, I know, a past admiral too, and I know there's another one to my left, it's always fun to see this and what this brings to town, so thank you for your time and efforts to make this a great success.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, let's take a call here. Dan Winner?
Aye.
Wendy Spry?
Aye.
Matt Bokey?
Aye.
Dan Josephson?
Aye.
Aaron Dolman?
Aye.
Natalie Bligh?
Aye.
Madeline Sukie?
Aye.
Motion carries, and I just want to say, ladies, anything we can do as a city to help you, please let us know, sooner the better, so we can help you, and we want to wish you the best, and congratulations on being named the co-admirals. I know you'll do a great job, keep the tradition going.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your hard work.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go on to the next item, is going to be 5G under Community Development. Dan?
All right, Item 5G is consideration to a resolution approving a parking variance for an office use at 600 Washington Avenue Artisan Properties. Larry, you want to give us a quick rundown on this?
Yes, this is a request for a variance to allow two parking spaces instead of the required nine spaces to convert the car wash at 600 Washington Avenue to an office building for a sports medicine clinic. And Planning Commission has reviewed this and unanimously recommended approval.
All right. So consideration to a resolution approving parking variance for an office at 600 Washington Avenue, CDC recommends approval and I so move.
Second.
Okay, is the motion the second? Is there any further discussion on that? Okay, let's take a call here. Get back to my sheets. Dan Winner?
Aye.
Wendy Spry?
Aye.
Matt Bokey?
Aye.
Dan Josephson?
Aye.
Aaron Dolman?
Aye.
Natalie Bligh?
Aye.
Madeline Sukie?
Aye.
That motion carries. We're set there, then, let's go. The other guests we have here tonight, we have Justin Forte and Brett Steele with Midco, Item 4C, and call on Natalie for that one.
Actually, Vice Mayor, Zeman, maybe you want to open up the public hearing?
Okay, excuse me, I should adjourn our regular meeting and go through with our public hearing at this time, and the first public hearing we'll have will be for a Midco cable franchise request.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here tonight. My name is Justin Forte, I'm the Senior Director of Government Relations for Midco in West Fardell. We are pleased to be working with the City of Detroit Lakes to build a new state-of-the-art broadband network in this community. We plan to work with you and your residents in the community to deliver 5G direct fiber to the home service, to every home and business in DL. That'll be 5G symmetrical, up and down. Including that, you'll have the access to the full slate of Midco services, including our TV video product, our phone service, access to our world-class data centers, and many folks are familiar with our award-winning sports network that brings a lot of regional high school college coverage to the region as well. We'd like to begin, construction is very soon here, we're getting some great weather. Our construction guys are now eager to get started, where a few weeks ago, they were just in the planning process, but we'll be bringing fiber all the way along Highway 10, and we'll also be constructing in the city of Detroit Lakes. Really, I think our tentative start date, weather permitting, is April 19. Both those two projects will have to be completed in order for folks to then be able to call and get service. Our marketing and construction teams do an excellent job with letters and mailings and informing people when construction and work will begin in their neighborhood and letting them know we are always open to any questions or concerns that anybody have. We want to make sure that the ground is repaired and the residents get it back the way that was before that our construction crews went through. We would expect to begin lining up folks with service at the beginning of September, where they would be able to get service from Midco at their homes and businesses, and that'll begin rolling, you know, through the community as well. Additionally, we're very excited to continue to partner with the city with the rest of the things that Midco Coming to Town offers. Midco Foundation has grant opportunities for the city and other nonprofits who are interested in applying, very interested in learning more about community projects that we can be a part of and sponsor from a marketing standpoint, and just very eager to work with Detroit Lakes to also promote this area through our TV spots throughout the Upper Midwest, and obviously, as we've seen, our products, particularly our broadband, through this has been more important than ever, as we've all used that for our meetings and for education and those types of things. And, you know, we've got Brett Steele is our general manager here for the Fargo area and the region, just so proud of his team at the beginning of the pandemic that responded with hooking up over 2,500 kids over just a couple of days, just a year ago. Really an amazing feat for those guys to hook up 2,500 kids with internet, and our ownership for them to step up and just to say, hey, we're going to, no questions asked, 2,500 kids are going to get free internet, anybody who asks, we're going to hook them up, and just really proud to work and represent this company and all the good things that they do on a daily basis. You know, we're in our 90th year. We started as the well-worth feeder company in downtown Minneapolis, because it was well worth, a dime was well worth the price of admission, and, you know, to really be a technology leader on the northern plains, you know, getting into radio, then television, then cable, and now we've got, bringing the fastest internet in the country, Detroit Lakes, is exciting. So at this point, I'd be open to any questions that anybody would have, and I know we've got the franchise agreement for our video product before you as well, so. Questions, or we can move on to any details with the franchise?
I have one question, and
Yes, sir.
Currently, our current provider, Arvic, they provide, you know, a broadcast of our city councils, but will you be able to telecast our council meetings on your channel for us?
I believe in our franchise agreement, you'll have all kinds of opportunities to do similar things with Midco, should the city so choose to have a public access channel and many of those other types of broadcasts and those types of things for the community. Happy to be a part of all that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? If not, thank you very much. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak in regards to the Midco cable franchise request here tonight, or any comments? If not, closed for the public, and at this time, I'll go back to the council. And do you have a recommendation, Natalie?
No, the Finance Committee reviewed this. Our city attorney, Charlie Ramstead, provided some background information. Charlie, did you have any more to add?
Lawyers can talk forever.
A quick update.
I'll make it relatively short. Many of you are familiar that we've already had, or had for years, Techstar and Arvig. The federal law basically says that that's a non-exclusive franchise, so now we've got another company that wants to come in and provide that service. Our obligation as a city is to make sure that the franchise ordinances are substantially similar. I've been working both with Arvig and Techstar, not just me, but Kelsey and I, for the past month, month and a half. I've worked with Mr. Steele and some of the other representatives of Midco. We're confident now, having shared this ordinance around, that it does meet the federal requirements. Just by way of background, we have a 3% franchise fee through the Arvig franchise. That same franchise fee will be collected through the Midco franchise, so it will be the identical same franchise fee for both entities. Beyond that, if there's other questions about the specifics of the ordinance, either I can answer them, or Mr. Steele, I'm sure, can answer them, but my guess is that you're not terribly interested in the details. So if there's any questions, otherwise, I will sit down.
Thank you. So the Finance Committee's review, we have the consideration to the first reading of ordinance 475, Midco Cable Franchise Agreement, and I so move.
Okay, we have a motion to second then, so let's take a vote here. Dan Winner?
Aye.
Wendy Spry?
Aye.
Matt Bokey?
Aye.
Dan Josephson?
Aye.
Aaron Dolman?
Aye.
Natalie Bligh?
Aye.
Madeline Sukie?
Aye.
That motion carries for the first reading, and we'll have the second one here next month, and glad to have you coming to our Detroit Lakes, and welcome for coming today. Thank you. Okay, at that, we'll go back to our, it looks like we've got, anybody else on the audience that would like to speak up at this time, has something on the agenda? If not, we'll go back to our regular agenda here then, and it looks like our first item is going to be Item 4B, Public Hearing to Receive Public Commerce for Proposed Street and Utility Improvements on Ridgeview First Edition. Go to Dan on that then, or, excuse me, Madeline Sukie on that.
John, do you need to say a few words about this, or?
You'll have to sit through one of my awesome presentations. So one second here, I'm going to share my screen. Yeah, and just to point out to the council, the developer, John Berquist, is also on Zoom, if there's questions after I run through my stuff here. So this is a public hearing for the Ridgeview First Edition Street Utility, Street and Utility Improvement Project. Some on the council, this is going to seem familiar, because we did do a hearing on this a couple of years ago, when the project initially took off, and then John had to hit the pause button for a little bit, and he's at the point now where he's ready to proceed with things. So unfortunately, that hearing, those hearings are good for a year, so we need to run through this again. So again, purpose and overview, provide some information and gain input from any public. It's a requirement of State Statute 429, related to special assessments. We want to gain any input or hear any questions that the public might have, or the council. So I'll go over the proposed improvements, the costs, and some of the special assessment related items, and we'll have time for questions at the end. A little bit on the background, John Berquist has petitioned the city for street utility improvements. This is a pretty typical subdivision-type improvement. This would be the first phase of what will be, hopefully, a much larger project as time goes on, about a 94-acre subdivision, right around 74 lots in the concept plat, mostly single-family, but there is some space there for some multifamily or apartment-type housing. The first phase will be limited to just about 13 lots. We completed the preliminary engineering report back in December of 2019, and again, followed that with a hearing in January of, that's wrong, January of 2020. As far as existing infrastructure out in this area, we've got sewer and water and those types of city facilities along Long Lake Road. That stuff was put in in about 2006 to 2007, and we can provide service to a good portion of this subdivision off of that infrastructure. As it continues to grow, we'll have to do some other things to continue that service. Proposed improvements in the way of sanitary sewer, we would extend the existing gravity sewer main from Long Lake Road with eight-inch mains and service laterals. We can get this first phase by a gravity extension, we have enough depth to do that. This will probably be about the end of the line for that gravity. This will probably be about the end of the line for that gravity extension. After that, we're going to have to put in a new lift station that would service this subdivision. And we actually looked at, that lift station would also be able to service some other adjacent areas if we have some additional development in the future. Water main, the one unique thing here, we will extend from the existing water main on Long Lake Road. We will be putting in a 12-inch water main, which is definitely larger than what we see in most of our subdivisions. Reason for that is this is likely a corridor, a transmission line for further and future growth, should that happen, say in the, I'm going to get my directions wrong here, south of Munson Lake Road or County Road 6, as we sort of hop that direction towards Munson Lake or potentially even Sally, things like that. So that's the reason for the larger line in that area. This is an area that will have a little bit poorer water pressure than probably what we'd like to see. It's sort of not hit that critical level, but it definitely is lower than we'd like to see. If you recall, we're talking about the possibility of a, of a new water tower and potentially raising and elevating that tower a little bit more. This area is one of the reasons that we would consider that. That additional height would help bump the pressure up in this area just a little bit. So this is just a short little, little picture here of what we'll be doing. The area in yellow is this first phase. Again, there are some lots that are directly adjacent to Long Lake Road. And then we have a few lots coming in on a new roadway. Pretty straightforward project from sewer and water standpoint. Stormwater is a little bit more complex because we're trying to look at this from an overall build-out and how we would do that. But we would install a storm sewer collection system and there would have to be a treatment element. The way we've looked at that right now would be a larger regional-type basin that would service the entire subdivision as it gets built out rather than multiple little basins. But we will have to comply with both the city's stormwater ordinance and Pelican River Watershed, MPCA, and things of that nature. Some of what we do in this first phase will sort of set the table for subsequent phases down the road. Streets, pretty typical, we would build those to our, our usual 36-foot-wide urban section street, so nothing too out of the ordinary there. Again, just a picture, you can see that area in red that's hatched out towards the bottom of the image, or I should say red and orange. That's the area that we're sort of targeting for the stormwater treatment basin. We build a portion of that now and then expand it as needed to service the rest of the development. Estimated costs, right now, project's sitting at about $520,000. I expect I'll, I'll probably get a little bit better insight to costs here as we start to bid some work. We've got some projects that are out right now and that'll give me a little bit better idea of how accurate this is. But this is up about $40,000 or so from where we were a couple of years ago. And that's just purely due to increases in, in material and labor. Funding and financing for the project, again, pretty typical for this type of project. It'd be split between the city and special assessments to the lots that are being developed in accordance with our policy. There have been changes to that assessment policy since we wrote the original PER. I've provided those changes to John, explaining what the changes are and what the cost impacts were. But it does shift more of the cost away from the city and towards special assessments. I guess in the way of informing the council, the impact of that change is, it was about $6,000 per lot was the increase from sort of the old policy to the current policy. So a summary of that is sewer and water main, 100% of the standard sewer and water mains are assessed, the city pays for the oversizing. And in this case, that would be that 12-inch water main, so we pay for that cost that's above eight inches in size. Service laterals are assessed 100%. Stormwater, again, that's another change. That now is a 50/50 split between the city and the development. And streets, 100% of the costs are assessed. So when you shake all that out, this is how that $520,000 project looks. The city would be paying just about $70,000 of the project cost with the remaining 450 being assessed to the development. So we allocate those again according to our special assessment policy. In this case, it's a pretty straightforward calculation. We basically take the costs, divide it by the number of lots that are benefiting to determine an assessment per lot. You'll notice there's, you know, 11 or 12 lots listed here. It sort of depends where you're at in the development because there are some lots that are adjacent to Long Lake Road. So when you shake all this out, we're looking at a special assessment that's estimated right now at just under $40,000 per lot. It does not include any deferred special assessments that might be on the property from previous projects, which I suspect that there is, but I don't know that. So something we'll have to dig into. As far as assessment terms, developer would be required to pay, prepaid 25% of the assessable cost part of design, assuming less than 20 lots, which it is. And then the balance is assessed over a maximum of 20 years or the developer has the option to take a five-year deferment followed by a 15-year term. Also a change to the policy. Looking at the schedule, we have the hearing tonight. We try to move through design over the next couple of months and get this thing out as quickly as we can. Probably looking at bidding a project sometime in June with construction yet this summer and an assessment hearing this fall following the substantial completion of the project. So I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I've, I've got a question to that now. Those are oversized lots, is that correct? That's not a traditional lot?
Uh, no, I would say that they're pretty, pretty typical of most subdivisions. They're not, they're not small, but I would say they're pretty typical of what you would see in most subdivisions that we have.
Okay, very good, thank you. Okay, so where do we want to go with this? Is there further discussion here then? Okay, we'll go back to Madeline then.
All right. Hearing no further comments or questions, the Public Works Committee moves to order the preparation of plans and specs for the street and utility improvements for Ridgeview First Edition.
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Any other further discussion? If not, we'll take the vote here. Dan Winner.
Aye.
Wendy Spry.
Aye.
Matt Bokey.
Aye.
Dan Josephson.
Aye.
Aaron Dahlman.
Aye.
Natalie Bligh.
Aye.
Madeline Sukie.
Aye.
That motion carries then. Let's move on to the next item then, it'll be item D. Dan Josephson, this is for a public hearing for commerce and annexation.
Right, yeah, I guess, if you open up the public hearing and call on anybody for comment, I guess.
Is there anybody here that would like to comment on that, on that area for moving from North Tower Road? This is where the Brazilian property are going to put in some new properties?
Nope, this, Larry-
Is that a, is that a-
This is, this is the annexation of the Arvic facility on Tower Road. This annexation started about a year ago, but Arvic had some problems with their legal restriction-
Oh, this is the Arvic, okay.
And finally got that corrected and now we're ready to complete the annexation.
Okay.
This is at the request of the property owner.
Okay, very good, thank you. Okay, if not, do you have a motion then?
Yep, if we're done with the public hearing, I'll, I can make a motion here. Consideration to the first reading of ordinance 478 for annexation of 4.82 acre tract of land in Detroit Township and zoning RA Agricultural Residence District at 26484 Tower, North Tower Road. CDC reviewed this, Planning Commission reviewed this, and we're all in agreement and I so move with the first reading.
Second. Okay, there's a motion, a second. Any other discussion on this? If not, we'll take a roll call then. Dan Winner.
Aye.
Wendy Spry.
Aye.
Matt Bokey.
Aye.
Dan Josephson.
Aye.
Aaron Dahlman.
Aye.
Natalie Bligh.
Aye.
Madeline Sukie.
Aye.
That motion carries. So that takes care of our public hearings for the night then, and then we'll move on to the Community Development Committee and Dan, it's, you're on.
Sure. Item 5A is, was just some discussion on some short-term rental regulations and trying to make some tweaks to some of the wording in there. And I think we just kind of, is it kind of going to be an ongoing situation where we'll just keep looking at that and see how that shakes out, but you'll be seeing some more from that in the future. Item 5B was a discussion regarding some extraterritorial subdivision ordinance. Again, this is something that's been ongoing for the last couple of years, dealing with our extraterritorial two-mile subdivision rights or, or whatever. Again, discussion, this will be back on the table here sometime again. So nothing, no action on that. Item C is consideration to a second reading and adoption of ordinance 477, amending ordinance number 473, annexing land at 2555, or 2655 Highway 10 West and 182 West Long Lake Road relative to Section 7 reimbursement to the township. Basically, this is cleaning up some language and compensating the township for the land that we annexed for ordinance 473. CDC recommends approval and I so move.
Second. Second, okay. Any further discussion? If not, let's take a vote here on that. Dan Winner.
Aye.
Wendy Spry.
Aye.
Matt Bokey.
Aye.
Dan Josephson.
Aye.
Aaron Dahlman.
Aye.
Natalie Bligh.
Aye.
Madeline Sukie.
Aye.
That matter passes then.
Item 5D is consideration to first reading of ordinance 479, amending the subdivision ordinance of the city of Detroit Lakes relative to allowing developers to construct public improvements in a subdivision. Community Development Committee reviewed this and recommends approval and I so move.
Second. So motion, a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I think just a point of clarification, maybe Larry wants to speak to what this does.
Yeah, essentially, we have been allowing developers to sometimes put in their own public improvements. And there were certain sections of our subdivision ordinance that were unclear about whether or not that was permitted. And so we wanted to make it clear that it was permitted under certain circumstances and what those circumstances would be. And we wanted to make it clear also that if a developer did put in the public improvements, that they would be the kind of improvements that the city would approve and accept. And so that's the, that's the reason for the changes.
Okay, any, any other questions? Okay. We've got a-
Got a motion and a second.
Motion, a second on that then, so we'll take the vote here. Dan Winner.
Aye.
Wendy Spry.
Aye.
Matt Bokey.
Aye.
Dan Josephson.
Aye.
Aaron Dahlman.
Aye.
Natalie Bligh.
Aye.
Madeline Sukie.
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries, let's go on to item E then.
Item E is consideration to a resolution approving the preliminary and final plat of the Boys and Girls Club Drift Edition at 1305 U.S. Highway 10 West. This is the Boys and Girls Club Drift Store of Detroit Lakes. Community Development Committee reviewed this. There is one, I, there's, the terms are, are in there and it had to do basically with some cross, cross-traffic agreements. But I, I so move.
I'd second that.
There's motion, a second. Now, is this where the proposed Aldi store will be going then? This is what they're getting ready for then?
Yeah, this is the store. Go ahead, Larry.
Yeah, that is correct. This is carving out the lot for the Aldi store.
Okay, any other questions? If not, we'll take a vote here then. Dan.
Aye.
Okay, Wendy Spry.
Aye.
Matt Bokey.
Aye.
Dan Josephson.
Aye.
Aaron Dahlman.
Aye.
Natalie Bligh.
Aye.
And Madeline Sukie, that motion carries then.
Item F is consideration to a resolution approving the preliminary, preliminary plat of Rock Ridge in the city's two-mile extraterritorial area. Developers Lee Carlson, I believe there was a unanimous at the Planning Commission level. It was agreed upon last night at the CDC meeting, so I recommend approval and so move.
Second. Motion, a second. Any discussion? If not, we'll take a vote here. Dan Winner.
Aye.
Then Wendy Spry.
Aye.
Matt Bokey.
Aye.
Dan Josephson.
Aye.
Aaron Dahlman.
Aye.
Natalie Bligh.
Aye.
And Madeline Sukie.
Aye.
That motion carries. Let's go on to the next item, it's H then.
H is consideration to a resolution approving the final plat of Lake Forest Eighth Edition. This is Marty Solomon's addition out there. CDC recommends approval and I so move.
Second. There's a motion, a second. Any discussion on this? If not, let's take a roll call here then. Madeline Sukie.
Aye.
Natalie Bligh.
Aye.
Aaron Dahlman.
Aye.
Dan Josephson.
Aye.
Matt Bokey.
Aye.
Wendy Spry.
Aye.
Dan Winner.
Aye.
That motion carries then, let's go on to I then.
I is the consideration to a resolution approving the final plat of Laker Island Storage, Common Interest Community Number 89. The CDC reviewed this and recommends approval and I so move.
Aye.
I'll second, I'll second that, I'm sorry.
There's a motion, a second, and any discussion? If not, we'll take a vote here. Let's go to Madeline Sukie.
Aye.
Then we go to Natalie Bligh.
Aye.
Aaron Dahlman.
Aye.
Dan Josephson.
Aye.
Matt Bokey.
Aye.
Wendy Spry.
Aye.
Dan Winner.
Aye.
That motion carries. And that looks like that pretty well takes care of you unless there's anything else, Dan.
Nope, I've got nothing else.
Okay, then let's go on to Public Works and Madeline Sukie then.
Sean, are you here?
Yep.
Good. Our Public Works Director is going to introduce our new street supervisor.
Counsel, I'm just happy to introduce our new street supervisor. He started March 1st, John Servantes. And just a quick little background, he comes from the city of Thief River Falls where he worked for 13 years, eight of them, eight of the last years as a street foreman. So he brings with him a lot of knowledge and experience that'll benefit the city of Detroit Lakes. This time, John, would you like to say a few words?
Good evening, everyone. I'd just like to thank you for the opportunity to work for you and serve in the community. Pretty excited for myself and my family to come down here and, and live and be a part of your community. So thank you.
Well, thank you and welcome aboard. Glad that you could be part of the Public Works Department.
Item B, discussion regarding the Washington Avenue and North Shore Drive Plaza. And this is some exciting, exciting plans, I think. And who's going to take the lead on it?
If I could, I'll, I'll tee this up for-
This is John's part of the program.
No, well, this is not John's thing, but that's where it landed. Yeah, Hans, that, that's you. So, well, while he's walking up here, just a little context. I think the council's well aware, we've been punting around ideas on, on various street enhancements, streetscapes and things like that at the intersection of North Shore Drive and South Washington. We've had to take this in some chunks. It, it sort of sailed in on us on the, the 11th hour as we were launching the construction and so we're sort of running these things in parallel. We've, to date, sort of agreed on, on a number of those elements that had to do with, you know, boulevards and colored concrete and landscaping and things like that. And a couple of the significant things that we've been kicking down the road and trying to land on a, on a solution that everybody sort of likes is this, the sailboat foundation, the base for the sailboat. We, if you recall, we removed the sailboat off of the beach. It's sitting somewhere out at Public Utilities right now. There was plans to refurbish that as part of the 150th and we're going to relocate that to this plaza area that's shown on the screen in the southeast corner of that intersection. But that's where it started and stopped. We hadn't really landed on, okay, what's this thing going to look like? And so Hans has come up with some ideas on that. And then also tying into that is this entrance monument that we've been discussing, putting alongside the street sort of a gateway marker to just give the area a little bit of a wow factor as you enter the beach. We've even taken that a step further and trying to look at, how could we continue that theme down along West Lake Drive when we get there in the next several years? So, anyway, without further ado, I'll let Hans explain what he's got in mind here and then we'll just go from there.
Well, thanks again for letting us, kind of for myself to present this. So, what you're looking at is the image, an aerial image of that roundabout on North Shore in Washington. So, it's kind of going north-south, which is, south is going that direction. So, if anybody's directly challenged by your daughters, that's where you're going towards the beach. So, when you're coming down, what you're going to see is part of the, one of the things I was asked to design was not only like this vibe and feel, a gateway towards the city of, the city's beach, which is being used and utilized more and more and more. And that's where the sailboat was removed, back in the falls to make more room for obviously Ice Palace, Bash in the Beach, different events that are coming and future explorations or whatever of West Lake Drive. So, with that came designing a new base. So, you're looking at an aerial view and what I designed is not far off of some of the designs you probably had seen earlier with the diameter of what that footprint is. It's just adding one of the elements that I've incorporated into that big monolith sign, it would be kind of the gateway entry to the city beach. And that's where the curvature is. The colors of the cement are being currently used, the gray, the, is it, what's it called? Terracotta?
Yellow.
Tan, same colors.
Okay.
And so, with that, what I did is I kind of bumped the sailboat a little bit further back to give more room for people to take the pictures. So, people are going to be taking those images of the parks, of the park and the pavilion versus kind of looking up into, into the buildings that are behind it. So, that's why it's a little off-center. When you look at the aerial view, the base, if we go to the next picture, we can flip back and forth if need be. What I designed was the main base is actually not, as opposed to the original elliptical look. That was in the past one, is I kind of made a basic kind of shape to contain the sculpture and then made benches along the side. This will give opportunities for mass group photos, hockey teams, visiting teams, JC members, whatever, that we see in the past where now you can now, A, there's two-sided benches and then, so they'll be able to stand on the ground, the benches are maybe up by the sailboat. So, it's giving more of a photo opportunity for bigger groups of people without blocking Detroit Lakes, established 1871. The metalwork on there would be used with the local company, is what we'd try to do with the laser printout of Sunfish and keep that blue thing that'll tie into the monolith signs that goes and that's kind of the Laker blue color that we're all familiar with. And then the rockwork would tie into that monolith as well. The sailboat is going to be refurbished. We've been, John, I've been talking about that since August. So, bull ironworks will come out, they'll sand, we're going to have it sandblasted. And then the new addition is the pennant at the top will have the city's 150th logo on that. So, that'll establish, because the current piece, I believe, was put in 2007 and this was during the earthquakes of LA back in 2007, that's what we're trying to replicate here. But anyways, so then the pennant with the 150th would celebrate this year and 150 years going forward. And then the Sunfish that you see on there were the Sunfish bronze plaques that were on the old base. I went over and I saw that there's only four and so I think there are 12, so I don't know where those other eight are, but hopefully we have those still. That's why, kind of my back is sore, I've been lifting sailboats out today, but we'll find them. But anyway, so that's what, those are, so we're trying to still be respectful and keep ties to those people who sponsored the original sailboats. So, we have the Sunfish and we will put a plaque on all the names, we're documented that we're on that sailboat, so all the payers, all the big sponsors, donors will be acknowledged on this one as well. And so, that's that piece. And then, that's the top half, we're building suspense. So, then on the opposite side, so the west side of South Drive, you know, so when you're driving south on Washington towards the beach, this would be the monolith, that would be that new gateway to the beach area. Part of the original discussions that we had were to incorporate some of the natural elements that we have up here, wood, rock, water, the colors, a vibe of what is Lakes country and why we live here and what we do year-round. And so, what you're looking at is a monolith structure that's 17 feet tall, using the sailboats that we are, based on my design, that we're using, BTD had created for the 150 Sails Up project to celebrate the 150th. So, that's already kind of, that work is already done. We can replicate those to the scale we want. And then the colors on there, the red and the white, the blue are the colors of like the Lakers and that's on the city logos. It will have Detroit Lake or whatever, if it's Detroit Lakes or Detroit Lake or whatever. And then the different features that are kind of fun on there is the wood look is actually CNC router, it's a high-density foam, whatever, so it's not a maintenance issue, so it's not wood, so it's not something you have to go back and replier all the time. Being 18 inches deep, that center panel, the rectangle in the middle is going to be actually like a polycarbonate, like a stained glass kind of look that'll have two different panels or two panels in there with lights in between. So, during the day, you'll get the sunlight lighting it, during night, we'll light it up, so you always have that colorful look of stained glass. Also recognize the city of Detroit Lakes. The red and white is kind of like a little, kind of fun to have with like the daredevil for fishing, outdoors activities at the lakes. The Sunfish area is a hollowed-out space with a, it'll look like a carved folk-style kind of Sunfish that if we go forward with the progressive signs down the beach for street signage, will be decorated and designed by local artisans that'll keep it kind of within the mainstay of Sunfish somehow. But those pieces, that can have a light up there as well and down the road if, for reasons why not, you know, we can change out the Sunfish logo and maybe put something else in there. But for right now, you know, we used to be known as the Sunfish capital of the world, so I kind of, I love that. And then the base would make out of river rock and then the smaller rocks as well to incorporate the vibe and feel of the lakeshore that we all kind of know of. And then the other thing that I love is we've always had, I've been a part of all these discussions of how do we create foot traffic? How do we walk around this town? What encourages people to walk from one place to the next? So, on the side view, you can see a plaque. It would be a poetry walk. And so, those, this would be the lead sign for that, which would have the smaller signs than all the other signs or places around town. So, this would be kind of like a map, kind of lead into where that would be. My daughter's participated in the Mankato Poetry Walk and the Wadina and she says, Mankato, they do poetry exchanges every three years. We'd like to do this every year, keep people moving, every summer, every spring, go walk around. These plaques would also not only have poetry, but visual art, paintings, photography, whatever on them as well. But that's what's going to get people then, I think, to walk up and down this beach, which I think would be really great and it's an interactive piece that's encouraging different forms of art and the different talents we have in this area. And then the sailboat at the top, we would match the look of that to the, to the new resurfaced sailboat, the main sailboat. Here you can go in there. Oh, there we go. So anyways, so these were, this would be a design based on the different street markers down the beach. So, you're going to have, this one represents Minnesota. So, you'd have them for Rossman Legion and so forth and so on. We carry the same type of elements with the fish and then also the stained glass kind of pieces in the middle that have a lake vibe feel, so lily pads, leaves, cattails, whatever, I've got all that stuff designed separately. But, and again, those would be lit up at night, so again, you're going to create this nice, different colors down the beach, so you know, you have blue, teals, you know, kind of aquatic Minnesota kind of outdoor vibe feel. Same with the rockwork, structure's made all kind of the same, so you'd have the lettering. You can see it's east-west directions and then of course, the Sunfish up there would be decorated as part of this whole project. And then I think, is there another one that we had? And so, part of the discussion we had was not only design, you know, where we need to move this sailboat to a new base, but then also this kickoff, this big, ta-da, here's our beach area, let's celebrate it. We're the only city, I think, in Minnesota that has a mile-long beach. I mean, our forefathers really thought this out and we need to respect that and I think celebrate it going forward. So, that's where you'd have those signs that would tie into that and then, and kind of thinking ahead is if we're expanding and redoing West Lake Drive, how do we kind of have a vision of where we want to go? And I also designed, threw in some concepts here of then the utilitarian signs, whatever you, it's a big word for me, kind of like 150th. So, these would be signs that would actually be for parking or maybe the landing, some of that would have more verbiage on them. And they're a simpler kind of sign that would be actually more, you know, realistic for production for, you know, wayfinding for people, whether it's via vehicle or traffic, foot traffic. And they would tie in with the elements of what are on the bigger signs.
So, I'm sure Hans will take any questions before I sort of bow this up and throw it back to the council, but now that that came on.
Are there any questions? If not, thanks, Hans, it looks great.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
So, what I want to point out is the last two drawings that Hans had up, those aren't things that we're considering right now, but it was done to try to paint a little bit larger picture of what we could do. We're not necessarily committed to either of the two, they're just ideas that we could look at as we continue to develop the West Lake Drive project and things like that. So, as far as council action and, you know, what are we asking? I think it's twofold this evening. I'm getting to the point where, in order to get this stuff in place for some of the 150th celebration stuff, in order to have the contractors that we already have on contract with South Washington Avenue, there's pieces of that, of this stuff that we would have them do, there's pieces that have to be done by other vendors and other vendors and sort of to get all that done, we need to start moving on that fairly quickly. So, the first ask of the council is, is this in line with what we're thinking? Do we like it? Can we move forward with this sort of concept? And then the second piece of that is, when we met and discussed this initially in late July of last summer, we sort of established a budget of about $200,000 that would go towards some of these streetscape elements down in this area. And to date, we've spent about $100,000 of that through change orders on the South Washington project and things like that. So, we have, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood of $100,000 left on that budget. I don't have specific numbers for you this evening on what these things are going to cost, because until I know that, yes, we like them or no, we don't, we weren't going to dive into that. I think what I'd like to do with the council's approval would be to move in this direction and as long as we can stay within that budget, are you comfortable with us just proceeding? Otherwise, the other option is now we go to contractors and get quotes and do all those things and come back to you again. So, those are the options, so.
Okay, so what you're looking for tonight then is to move ahead in the streetscape and the streetscape here we're talking about is North Shore Drive and Washington Avenue down to Pavilion, that's the space we're talking about. And you need approval tonight from the council to go ahead and continue working, is every, I guess we should, this just show a hand sign if you like what you see here tonight, what we show. We've done a lot, we've had a lot of plans, but for me, I think this is, this looks the best we've seen. So, if you like what you see up tonight, would you raise your hand so we get a, so anybody not like it or?
Done.
So, I think you can see where it's at here and Madeline, if you want to make a motion on that so that we can get that down to let them go ahead and get going on that, then John can come back with the pricing on this here, because the whole idea is, it was back in 1871 on July 29th, our city was started. And the idea of this streetscape is to have this thing done by that week, July 29th. And so, we've got stuff to get going on. And so, we're asking support tonight for that. And I also want to mention that there is 150th Anniversary Committee that's working on lots of projects to celebrate the city's birthday. And if you'd like to be a volunteer for the anniversary, please call the city office and say, how can I be a volunteer and we'll find a spot for you, because we've got lots of jobs that need to be done and we've got, we're looking for help. So, if you can help us on that. And I also want to mention that Anniversary Committee, they've been selling sailboats. They had 150 of them to sell. They sold 75 large ones and they've sold 60 of the small ones. They got 15 small ones left to go. So, if you're a business out there and said, jeez, I want to get in on this, call the city office, we've got one for you, because they're not going to last long and they're all being painted by different artists throughout the state and we're going to have a regatta here on April 30th at the Ice Arena where all 150 of these sailboats are going to be on display. You'll be able to come down and see every one of them. And we're going to have the names of the sponsors by each one and the artists there. And so, it's going to be a big event, it's going to actually be our kickoff for this. So, if you're out there wondering, how can I buy one of these? How can I get one of these sailboats? Call the city office. But there's a lot of work that's gone into this. Hans has done a great job on these sailboats, he's designed them along with the streetscapes and stuff, so we've done a lot of stuff. So, just, I'm just giving a little update for getting ready for the celebration, but get the word out, Detroit Lakes is going to have a birthday party.
Ready?
Yeti.
The Finance Committee moves to allow John and his folks to move ahead with the plans that have been presented and keeping it within the scope of the budget.
Sarah, second.
Second.
We've got a motion to second. Any other discussion? If not, take a vote here. Dan Winner.
Aye.
Wendy Spry.
Aye.
Matt Bokey.
Yep.
Dan Josephson.
Aye.
Erin Dolman.
Aye.
Natalie Bligh.
Aye.
And Madeline Sukie.
Aye.
That motion's going to carry then. Next item then. Thanks very much, Hans.
Item C, consideration to a resolution approving the plans and specs and authorizing the advertisement for bids for the Willow Street, Holmes Street and Fraser Street, Street and Utility Improvement Project. John, do you need to say anything other than that? We want to do that.
I, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I was, Hans was distracting me, I'm sorry.
Oh, goodness. And I'm not eating the mic. And now it doesn't want to stay up. Do you want to speak to anything about approving the plans and specs for Willow Street, Holmes Street and Fraser Street?
Sure. Just an update really on, this is our large reconstruction project for this year that involves Willow Street, Fraser Street, Holmes Street and then the alley behind Penny's. We're nearing completion of those plans, we've got to get them submitted to MINDOT and down to MINDOT Central Office for review and approval and all that good stuff. So, we've got a ways to go on this, we've got, Larry's working on getting easements that we need to construct the project. So, there are a few pieces to move into place yet, but we are asking the council for approval of the plans and authorization to bid. As soon as I sort of get to that point, at least this step is out of the way. At this point, right now, I'm thinking that we'll probably be looking at bidding sometime in April and bringing bids back in probably May.
And just so everybody knows, this is a project that's going to be spread over two years approximately.
Correct. At this point, I think, you know, if we get a start on this by about midsummer and get a portion, which we are going to, we're going to target the Fraser, Holmes and Alley area this summer, we may or may not get a start on a portion of Willow, but I think the large portion of Willow will probably be done next year.
Thanks, John. The Finance Committee moves to approve the plans and specs and authorizes the advertisement for bids for the Willow Street, Holmes Street and Fraser Street, Street and Utility Improvement Project.
Second.
Key, we've got a motion to second for the resolution. Is there any discussion? Let's take a roll call here. Dan Winner.
Aye.
Wendy Spry.
Aye.
Matt Bokey.
Aye.
Dan Josephson.
Aye.
Erin Dolman.
Aye.
Natalie Bligh.
Yes.
And Madeline Sukie.
Aye.
And that motion carries.
Item D is consideration to a resolution banning parking on Fraser Street. Once again, I'll call on John just to give us a little photo of why we're doing that.
Sure. Counsel, this is, it's a requirement that comes along with our state aid funding that that we're using on this project. But what we're asking for here, we're required to do, is pass a resolution that would ban on-street parking on a portion of Frazee Street. And that portion is from McKinley Avenue to the crossing between the two hospital campuses. So in that area, we plan to put in some center-left turn lanes and things like that to help make traffic move a little bit better through there. And the hospital, which is the majority of the adjacent property there, has been very supportive of getting rid of the on-street parking there. So.
Public Works has given this consideration and moves to ban parking on Frazee Street.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion to second. Any discussion? If not, let's take a vote here. Dan Winter?
Aye.
Wendy Spry?
Aye.
Matt Bokey?
Aye.
Dan Josephson?
Aye.
Aaron Dolman?
Aye.
Natalie Bly?
Aye.
And Madeline Sukie?
Aye.
That motion carries.
Item E, consideration to the second reading and adoption of ordinance 470 yard waste disposal site. There have been no changes from the first reading that was done last month. The Public Works moves to adopt that ordinance.
Second.
There's a motion to second. Is there any discussion on that? If not, let's take a vote here. Dan Winter?
Aye.
Wendy Spry?
Aye.
Matt Bokey?
Aye.
Dan Josephson?
Aye.
Aaron Dolman?
Aye.
Natalie Bly?
Aye.
Madeline Sukie?
Aye.
That motion carries.
The second part of that is, in order to have this publicized, we need to have a four-fifths vote of the entire council tonight. So once again, we move to approve the summary of ordinance 470 for publication purposes.
Second.
There's a motion to second, we need four-fifths vote for this to pass tonight. So let's take the vote here. Dan Winter?
Aye.
Wendy Spry?
Aye.
Matt Bokey?
Aye.
Dan Josephson?
Aye.
Aaron Dolman?
Aye.
Natalie Bly?
Aye.
Madeline Sukie?
Aye.
That motion carries, and we have the four-fifths. Next item.
Item F is consideration to accept the 2021 Kent Freeman Arena Two Improvement Proposal. The Public Works Committee reviewed this yesterday, and we so moved, but I'll call on either Kelsey or Sean to just kind of highlight it.
Vice Mayor and Council, I'll do my best here. So we're looking at total project cost to basically make improvements into Arena Two, replacing the glass and the dasherboards of $41,000, a little over $41,000. The good news is, actually, the dasherboards, which are about $10,000, and that $41,000 has already been purchased. We purchased that when we did the Arena One improvement, so that we have that already in supply, so that's not a new purchase. The rest of the balance, we're looking at a contribution from the DL Youth Hockey Club, DL Youth Hockey Association for $10,000, and then the Kent Club for another $10,000. So really, for the consideration here before the City Council is authorizing the balance, roughly the $11,000 coming from the Arena Commission Capital Fund. It's, it makes a lot of sense to do the project now. We've got a good bid on the glass, some was just general maintenance items too. Basically, the C-Channel and stuff around the boards are getting broken, so it's kind of a maintenance and safety issue, and it's also an improvement at the same time. So that's the consideration for the council.
As I stated, the Public Works Committee reviewed this quite extensively yesterday and so moves.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion to the second. Is there any discussion on this? And like Kelsey said, our approximate cost will be around $11,000 now. Let's take a vote here then. Dan Winter?
Aye.
Wendy Spry?
Aye.
Matt Bokey?
Aye.
Dan Josephson?
Aye.
Aaron Dolman?
Aye.
Natalie Bly?
Aye.
And Madeline Sukie?
Aye.
That motion carries.
Item G, consideration to the memo from the Public Works Director for the purchase of a Towmaster Model T, 5DT, 14-foot trailer from Monroe Towmaster. This has been precipitated by the fact that we now have mowing to do at the South Shore Drive Park, and we're going to need a trailer to trailer a mower out. They can't take it, drive it out that far. So the Public Works Committee reviewed that yesterday and moves for the purchase of that trailer.
Second.
There's a motion to the second. Is there any discussion, any questions? If not, we'll take the vote here. Dan Winter?
Aye.
Wendy Spry?
Aye.
Matt Bokey?
Aye.
Dan Josephson?
Aye.
Aaron Dolman?
Aye.
Natalie Bly?
Aye.
And Madeline Sukie?
Aye.
Okay, next item, motion carries.
The next item is City Engineers Monthly Project Status Report. John?
All right. Vice Mayor and Council, I've probably used my allotment of time, so I'll maybe skim this a little bit this month. Westlake Drive, continued work on that project. We have the plans at a point that they're basically complete. We've submitted them to MINDOT for review and comment. We'll have to again get those down to MINDOT Central Office in the Twin Cities as soon as we get that stuff back. But the short story is from a design standpoint, we've really are just about complete with that and ready to go to bid. But that's going to be subject to MINDOT's authorization and things of that nature. The county continues to work through the quiet title action. I think there's another hearing coming up in the next week or so, where we hope to potentially even conclude that process. But at the same time, if, if that process is not favorable to the city and the county, we're, we've also sort of teed up the condemnation process, running that in parallel, so that if we need to do condemnation for some remaining parcels and land associated with that project, we've sort of got that ready to go. So the whole thing is going to be kind of contingent around how fast that process moves. But I think in any case, we're going to be looking at hopefully trying to bid the project sometime in April, or worst case, hopefully May, and starting construction probably early to mid-July is my guess right now. And then that'll take the balance of the year. So that's where that one is at. I don't need to really touch on item two. Item three, the Berquist subdivision or Ridgeview, we talked about that tonight. I don't think there's anything else to discuss there. We've talked about South Washington tonight. Long Pine Estates, nothing to mention there, other than I expect the contractor will start some construction activity again out there, probably in another month or month and a half. Item six, the Bristoland subdivision, still progress being made on that. I haven't necessarily seen a plan or anything of that nature come from the developer yet. They're developing that on their own, going to finance the project on their own. So we've had some communication, but we're just in a holding pattern on that right now. The Willow Homes and Frazee Street project, we talked about that earlier. And the other one that I would mention here is the Lake Forest Seventh Edition or Eighth Edition, I think, project. That project is out for bids and would be opening bids next Thursday on that. So I may be bringing bids to the special meeting on the 22nd. So, any questions?
I think we have. Thank you, John. Chairman Sukie, is there anything else?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Okay, let's move on to Finance. And Natalie, can you help me there on the first item there, item A?
Sure. So in front of the Finance Committee, we discussed the transient merchant ordinance to allow licenses for up to one year. Currently, the long-term license is six months. So with that, there's additional discussions around fees, so that will come back at a later time. And then we also had Karen Newdel on item B with the Detroit Lakes Public Schools Visit Us to discuss their new program through the school that they'd like to rent the police department for. So Kelsey was going to provide a little update on that.
Yeah, Vice Mayor and Council, again, I had a memo in the packet, just kind of giving you a heads up. We've had some discussion with Detroit Lakes Public Schools about possibly leasing the police department. You know, we start to nail down obviously the details and agreement. We're going to work on that over the next month along with some cost estimates. There's some building improvements that we need to make to the building to make it kind of tenant-ready. Like I mentioned, you know, time is of the essence. They would like to nail down a location kind of by their April School Board meeting. So we'll work on that over the next month. No, no decision to make tonight, just want to give you a heads up that we've had some discussions with them about possibly leasing the old police department.
Very good, thank you.
And then we also had Sam Ruffer with the Detroit Lakes Country Club join us and provide us with the budget and fee schedule, which was in your packet. So Finance reviewed it and is considering to approve the 2021 budget and fee schedule and ISO move.
Second. Motion to the second. I might add that Sam mentioned that there do increases approximately 2% this year, so they've kept it very conservative. Is there any discussion on this? Any other questions? If not, got a motion to second, let's take a vote on that here then. Dan Winter?
Aye.
Wendy Spry?
Aye.
Matt Bokey?
Aye.
Dan Josephson?
Aye.
Aaron Dolman?
Aye.
Natalie Bly?
Aye.
And Madeline Sukie?
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries. Item E?
So on 7E, I need a little help from our City Finance Officer, Heidi. So she's going to give an update on the LGA funding.
Sure, thanks Natalie. In your council packet, there is a resolution supporting local government aid, or funding. Basically, what this resolution does is encourage our legislators to continue funding LGA at the level that they currently do. We also point out that we are, and have been the last few years, a loser of LGA, in that we lose funding every single year and continue to lose funding. So for 2021, we're looking at a decrease of $94,750 from the prior year. So what this resolution does is encourage the Minnesota House and Senate that they should fund LGA to the levels that they had before, and encourages them to not cut our allocation for 2022, at least 2022, but hopefully going forward. So passing this resolution, we would then circulate this to Governor Tim Walz, Speaker of the House, Senate, and House Majority and Minority Leaders, as well as Detroit Lakes representatives.
Thank you. You know, I want to mention that the Coalition, the Greater Minnesota Cities, and the League of Minnesotas, who two groups we belong to, they're really lobbying for us. But $94,750 lost to us this year compared to what we had the year before. That's dollars we have to make up from our own taxpayers here in Detroit Lakes. So if some of you know some of these congresspeople, especially Ekin and Markort, reach out to them and tell them how important it is that we get our LGA dollars back the way it used to be. So you have a motion on that then?
Yes. So in an effort to support that funding, the Finance Committee recommends consideration to a resolution supporting the LGA funding and ISO move.
Second. There's a motion to the second. Any other questions? If not, let's take the vote here. Dan Winter?
Aye.
Wendy Spry?
Aye.
Matt Bokey?
Aye.
Dan Josephson?
Aye.
Aaron Dolman?
Aye.
Natalie Bly?
Aye.
And Madeline Sukie?
Aye.
That motion carries. Next item.
And the next item is a plan that Heidi will also cover and provide a recap on, like she did for her Finance Committee earlier. Good evening again, everyone. I'll try to
keep it short and sweet. So the item on your agenda is to consider adopting a Title Six Plan for the City of Detroit Lakes, MINDOT Federal Highway Administration Subrecipient. This came out because MINDOT contacted the City of Detroit Lakes and other cities that received federal funding, and just sort of reminded us that we need to follow certain guidelines for non-discrimination. And so the plan in your packet just memorializes these things that have been in place for a number of years. And so what this plan does is lays out the city's non-discrimination policies, develops a language assistance plan for residents that may not speak English, also posts public notices of rights related to non-discrimination practices, develops a complaint process and complaint forms. And then this way, when the city completes our self-assessment that MINDOT is asking us to complete, we can say with some certainty that we are fulfilling some of the requirements that are required under Title Six in order to receive those federal funds. So I would encourage the council to pass this or adopt this plan. And then we'll likely be reviewing it and revising it going forward, but this is a great start to at least memorialize in writing our non-discrimination policies.
Okay, thank you Heidi. What's your recommendation, Natalie?
So the Finance Committee reviewed, and we have the consideration to adopting the Title Six Plan for the City of Detroit Lakes, MINDOT FHWA Subrecipient, and ISO move.
Second. There's a motion to second. Any discussion? If not, let's take a vote here. Dan Winter?
Aye.
Okay, Wendy Spry?
Aye.
Matt Bokey?
Aye.
Dan Josephson?
Aye.
Aaron Dolman?
Aye.
Natalie Bly?
Aye.
And Madeline Sukie?
Aye.
That motion carries. Is there anything else that you have then? Looks like we pretty well have covered it then. Let's move on to, to item 8A. Dan Winter?
Thank you, Juan. Thank you. So we're going to hold off on item 8A. The bids, the quotes were provided, but it turns out that like metal fascia around the edge of the roof needs to be replaced too, and it just makes sense to do it all at once. So the fire department's going to go out and get quotes that would include that and bring it back to a future meeting. So with your permission, I'll move on to item B?
Absolutely.
Okay, so the fire department has a vehicle that actually currently belongs to the VNR, but we, you know, we use it and are responsible for repairs, and frankly, it's shot. So the chief tracked down a 2011 Ford F-450 from MINDOT, which we can purchase. The truck fits our needs. We'll need to do some paint and add lights to it, but it's a good deal for the city. So the Public Safety Committee recommends purchasing that 2011 Ford F-450 from MINDOT for the fire department and ISO move.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion to the second then. Is there any questions? If not, let's take the vote here. Dan Winter?
Aye.
Wendy Spry?
Aye.
Matt Bokey?
Aye.
Dan Josephson?
Aye.
Aaron Dolman?
Aye.
Natalie Bly?
Aye.
And Madeline Sukie?
Aye.
That motion carries then.
And that's all I have.
Okay, would you like to have the police chief give us an update on the station?
Sure, is he there? I assume so. Chief Todd?
Good evening. I just came from the station right before the meeting, and they're making a lot of progress inside. They've been polishing the concrete floors and hanging up some of the vertical slats in the clear-story ceiling areas. They've also been installing wains coating tile on a lot of the walls. And if you look at the exterior, they're starting to get some of the concrete panels up on the lobby exterior walls. So things have been going really well. Actually, if we wrap this meeting up soon enough, I'll give you guys a tour if you'd like one after the meeting tonight, if we get out before dinnertime. Anything else?
Chief, that should do it. Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
And then I see we've got Chief Swanson here too, Dan.
If he has anything he wants to say, I know he had told us that the Public Safety Committee's had a really busy first part of the year. Chief, do you want to add anything to that?
Sure, thank you, Vice Mayor and Council. So this year, as we start off the year, our fiscal year starts in December. From the 1920 year, we were averaging, I think it was, I don't have my numbers, but around 46, 47 calls. This year, on that same timeline, we are up to 76 calls. So we are almost doubling the calls already in the first three months. So it has been pretty busy, that type of stuff. We also, on Thursday night, we will be testing two new recruits. They will be starting off their testing procedure with Glory at the City Hall, I think around 2:00. And then they'll be coming down to the fire station to start our interview process, and then we'll move forward from there on how that all works out. With that being said, we are currently always still looking for new recruits. So if anybody knows of anybody or is watching, that is interested in joining the Detroit Lakes Fire Department, reach out to myself or City Admin, and we'd be more than likely to look at putting, putting more people on. and, um, we'd be more than likely to, um, look at putting, putting more people on. We currently have four members on probation, two of those will be coming off shortly. Um, and then we have two more in about another four months, um, that will be, you know, going through the same process with. So, um, again, what, uh, Councilman Warner was talking about, I did get, I shared with, uh, Heidi and Kelsey, um, we did have that fascia budgeted for next year, um, but it's looking like it would be, we'd be wasting about fifteen to twenty thousand dollars in order to do the roof this year and do the fascia next year. So, um, I'll be working with them, and we'll try to figure out how we can try to get this all in one budget, because obviously throwing that kind of money away is senseless. So, it was a good idea to postpone that for the time being until we can get it figured out.
Chief.
Any questions?
Any questions? If not, thank you very much.
Thanks, have a good night.
Okay, Dan, is there anything else?
That's all I can have.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, let's move to, uh, Chairman Bokey for the Liquor Gambling Control Committee.
Uh, item nine A, consideration to the request for a fifteen-hundred-dollar, uh, donation to the sponsorship of flower baskets for downtown. Uh, after discussing this at liquor and gambling, we'd like to increase that to three-thousand-dollar donation. Uh, that being said, the liquor, uh, excuse me, the liquor store had a great year this year. Uh, this would take, uh, some pressure off some of the businesses donating, uh, expand the basket reach possibly to South Shore Drive more, down by the beach. Uh, so that was discussed there, and, uh, I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion, a second, any discussion? If not, let's, uh, take a vote here then. Uh, Dan Winner.
Aye.
Wendy Spry.
Aye.
Matt Bokey.
Aye.
Dan Josephson.
Aye.
Aaron Dollman.
Aye.
Natalie Bly.
Aye.
Madeline Sukie.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Item nine B, consideration of the proposal to provide marketing services for the hundred-and-fiftieth, uh, celebrations from Carmen McCullough. Uh, Kelsey, is there any insight you'd like to give us, please?
No, uh, just Vice Mayor and Council, this is a idea that came up through our Hundred-and-Fiftieth Committee to contract with, with Carmen to kind of coordinate our marketing plan, so we have a kind of unified approach to all of our events. So, pretty reasonable, um, proposal and recommend approval for it, so.
We discussed this, we kind of, we're in concurring with, uh, Kelsey, and, uh, we recommend approval.
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? If not, let's take the vote. Uh, Dan Winner.
Aye.
Wendy Spry.
Aye.
Matt Bokey.
Aye.
Dan Josephson.
Aye.
Aaron Dollman.
Aye.
Natalie Bly.
Aye.
Madeline Sukie.
Aye.
That motion carries. Is there anything else that you have, Madeline?
Uh, no, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, let's go to item ten, and, uh, we've got an item on there. Uh, do you want to take that, Madeline?
Yeah, I had it on my phone and now it's gone, of course, that would be the case. Um, this is to give consideration to the approval of a bid for switchgear for the electric substation. You know, that's the one that's south town, and awarding the contract to HKS Company. Uh, the bid came in at roughly two-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars. Um, luckily, again, it was under bid. I mean, under what we were expecting, maybe not as great as the first couple, but still under what we were expecting. So, um, I move to approve that bid.
Second. Okay, there's a motion, a second, approve that bid. Is there any discussion on that? If not, let's take the vote here. Uh, Dan Winner.
Aye.
Wendy Spry.
Aye.
Matt Bokey.
Aye.
Dan Josephson.
Aye.
Aaron Dollman.
Aye.
Natalie Bly.
Aye.
Madeline Sukie, that motion carries. Uh, next item, uh, let's go under the, uh, item number twelve, the mayor's agenda. Uh, item A, when Matt Brink went on his vacation, he says, Zeevan, find somebody from the council to be on this library. And, uh, so, we've got two ways we can do that. We can have a volunteer tonight, or we can put all your names in a hat and grab one out. But I would rather have a good volunteer. It's a, I've, I've served on that twice, and it's, it's a, it's a good committee, it really is, and it doesn't take that much time. But do we have somebody that would like to be on that library board? Don't raise your hands at the same time. We got Wendy here, we've got a, we've got a winner here. Wendy, thank you so much.
Thanks, Wendy.
I hope I didn't put too much pressure on you.
Mr. Vice Mayor, you want a motion?
We'd be able to take a motion to approve her, yes.
I'll make a motion to appoint, uh, Wendy Spry to the, uh, library board.
I second that.
And we got a motion, a second, and there can't be any discussion, so all in favor?
No one wants to talk?
Forget the rules, say aye. I suppose we're going to say Dan Winner, though.
Aye.
Okay, then we got Wendy Spry.
Aye.
Matt Bokey.
Aye.
Dan Josephson.
Aye.
Aaron Dollman.
Aye.
Natalie Bly.
Aye.
And Madeline Sukie and, uh,
Aye.
and we got that. You got to be fast here, Madeline. Anyway, uh, thanks so much for doing that, Wendy, I appreciate that. Okay, the, the next item is, uh, B, in consideration to a resolution to extending this declaration emergency to tell our next council meeting, Tuesday, April thirteenth. Their motion to extend our declaration emergency.
So moved.
We've got a motion, and there's a second. And any discussion? If not, uh, Dan Winner.
Aye.
Wendy Spry.
Aye.
Matt Brink, or Matt Bokey.
No.
Dan Josephson.
Aye.
Okay, and Natalie Bly.
Aye.
And Madeline Sukie.
Aye.
Okay.
You didn't get Aaron.
And, oh, we got Aaron Dollman, excuse me, Aaron. I, I forgot you there. You didn't volunteer for the library board. Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. Okay, the next thing, uh, now, uh, City Ministry, Kelsey, do you have anything that you'd like to bring up at this time?
Uh, the only thing I was going to mention is just, uh, underneath announcements, um, the, let me find it here, information announcements, again, border review. Uh, we have a, a tour of the existing food pantry scheduled for next Monday, March fifteenth, at four o'clock. Um, I'll try to coordinate that a little bit better and have a plan, but if you just want to, uh, meet at the food pantry at four o'clock, we'll, we'll have it figured out by then on how to do tours and keep everyone kind of separated, so. And then, uh, we have a special council meeting scheduled for Monday, March twenty-second. Uh, the main focus there is kind of continuing our capital improvement plan workshop. Uh, we'll, we'll jump into some of our facility planning, and then we do have a few agenda items we'll probably have on there, um, probably maybe that bid approval that, uh, City Engineer John Pratt mentioned. So, those are the two things I was going to mention.
Okay, uh, then one other thing here is, uh, mark your calendars for April sixth. That's when we have our next joint governance meeting. Uh, it's going to be sponsored by the DL Chamber this time, and Glory will give us information about where that location is going to be. So, let's go down to the council members here. Dan, do you have anything?
I don't, Ron.
Okay, how about you, Wendy?
No, I don't.
Matt Bokey.
Uh, just keep in mind, there is a position open at the, uh, DL Liquor Store that's posted and open until the seventeenth, so always taking applications for, uh, great quality, uh, employee down there.
Okay, very good. Dan Josephson.
Nothing.
Okay, and Aaron Dollman.
The March twenty-second meeting, that we'll be able to zoom in from out of town?
Yep. That's planned, yep.
Okay, very good. And Natalie?
Yeah, I would just like to add to the DL one-hundred-and-fiftieth celebration.